This will get pushed back, pushed back, and again, time is of the essence. Speaking more specifically to the morality question. I read the scriptures and they lead me to certain beliefs. And this bill, if it singles out anybody to give preferential treatment to, the people of religious belief. And it should be that way. It does not prohibit, as I think has been possibly implied, that somehow is preventing people from practicing their religious beliefs. It does not do this. I am still free, if I believe a certain thing about particular lifestyles, to believe that. And to believe that God instructs me not to participate in that lifestyle. But if I own a restaurant, and I ask somebody to leave, yes, that's a moral question. I have acted immorally. I've acted against the God that I claim to be serving in doing that. It was these same scriptures that were twisted in these kinds of ways, not too long ago in this country, to ask, to ask people of color to leave a restaurant or to sit at a different counter. And I often have apologized for the church, that she unfortunately was at the vanguard of those kinds of discriminations. I think we've made great progress in the church. There's a long way to go. And I support what you're doing. As a conservative, and I'll say the word evangelical Christian. And I would urge you to unanimously pass this. Don't wait until you get perfect language to give your vote. Unanimously pass this, to send a loud message to our community that discrimination is not permitted. At our last council, we heard the story of a woman who was talking to her son before she came here. And he said, "Mom, why do we even need this?" The idealism of a young child who can see things that we struggle to see. The unfortunate reality is that is the world we live in. It does go on. In overt and sometimes in covert ways. Will this bill stop discrimination? No. But will it say that we will allow it? Certainly. And hopefully we'll bring redress for those who are discriminated against. Thank you.
Ms. Holland and Lorraine, pass where all the items that you listed are not on the agenda. So that would be under the second courtesy of the floor. So I move to...
Oh, I'm sorry. That was a mistake. I thought you wondered what organization I was representing, but I want to speak on this.
Okay, then. You want to speak?
I am speaking on behalf of the Southside Film Institute, but in support of the ordinance I discussed.
Okay, that's fine.
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Pasquale. I currently reside at 1630 Kenwood Drive in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. Tonight I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Southside Film Institute. The Southside Film Institute through our annual festival and monthly film club celebrates diversity in all its forms. I am honored that our board of directors voted unanimously to support and not discriminate the ordinance in the city of Bethlehem. We believe that this legislation is long overdue and urge our city council to embrace all members of the Bethlehem community. All of our people, regardless of ethnicity, sexual orientation, religion, cultural background, age, or physical ability, has something to offer and deserve an equal opportunity to participate in our society. We urge you to pass this ordinance and create this human relations commission and do it as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christopher Kelly.
Thank you. As a guest in your fair city, I am from Virginia. I work for a company in Bethlehem. I have a theory that, and I worked in high-tech technology. And I have a theory that for every human invention, every technology that is invented to solve a problem, creates at least as many new problems as it solves. And this is even more applicable with laws. While it may solve one problem, it creates other problems. And we see it every day with unintended consequences from laws, regulations, benefits, entitlements to one group or one class of society over against others. This very building was built by a company that I believe went out of business. Could not continue its business in Pennsylvania. And I, as a libertarian, would blame the government for a large proportion of that failure. For not creating an environment where that business could fly, could drive. That said, discrimination is an evil thing, but it is also another word for judgment. And when a government claims to itself the sole judgment on any given issue, any kind, any number of unintended consequences befall them. And that, and the first one, of course, is freedom. Now, I am not free to make my own judgment, be it right or wrong, about the issue of whatever special interests are represented in this bill. As an individual, my freedom is diminished. I cannot speak freely. I cannot allow, I cannot fire someone from my business or hire someone. I hire person A because I like him better than person B for reasons that might be complained about in this bill by the person B. I lose freedom. You have taken to your government my freedom. And that's an unintended consequence that will hurt the city of Bethlehem and the state of Pennsylvania in the long run. So I applaud you for one, for taking time to consider very carefully the wording of your bill. It is, of course, as you all well know, a very difficult bill to write. It's not, it's not a light matter to say that something that has been considered immoral for thousands of years is now acceptable and moral. That's a difficult place to be in, and I don't envy you. And it's a very difficult job to craft an organization that shall enforce this new morality, as it was described. And will answer any complaint against any person. I think, I think you will find that this is a very, very difficult bill. And that the consequences will be very, very sad in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hopkins.
My name is Rob Hopkins. I live at 726 West Market Street in the city of Bethlehem. I love Bethlehem. Bethlehem is a place that I'm proud to call home. Today, my city council was supposed to make an important step in the city's future. I certainly hope each of you realize how important this is. More important than any statistics or budget discussion, this legislation to create the Bethlehem Human Relations Commission will have a direct impact, impact on the residents of our city. I applaud each of you for stepping up to support the goal of equal treatment of all people in the city of Bethlehem. But I do ask that you closely examine the details of this legislation to ensure that it truly protects all minorities in the city of Bethlehem from potential discrimination. Specifically, I hope that you fully empower this commission to make, make the broadest impact and address the inequality currently written into the bill's exemptions. Just, just a few words might be changed to enable the Bethlehem Human Relations Commission to help all of the residents of this city. If this commission can ease the burden of just one person facing discrimination, all the debate and deliberation, and even the waiting, will make this well worth it. I had planned to submit for the record a petition, a petition signed by nearly 500 concerned people, urging this council to adopt a strong, fully inclusive, non-discrimination law. Instead, we'll continue to get more signatures. So check your email. Thanks.
Thank you. Ilsa Stoll.
I'm Ilsa Stoll. I live 220 West Langhorne Avenue in Bethlehem. I've lived here for over 40 years and I live here by choice. And I'm very glad that we are finally getting this close to passing a human rights ordinance in Bethlehem, which has been overdue. I would like to support the passage of this law that gives religious organizations an exemption, but does not give any entity associated with a church an exemption. Because that language is too broad and that is not the intent of the law. I also would like to support the expanded protections because I believe that the Human Rights Commission should have the power to enforce a law, especially when it cannot be supported by the state or the federal government. Please consider that as you finalize your draft. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike O'Hare. I think I got that wrong, but Fourth Avenue. I apologize.
You got it right. Mike O'Hare, 632 Fourth Avenue. I'll be brief. Some of the things that concern me that I've heard tonight. First of all, I'd ask the good reverend to exegete the scriptures instead of i-sageet the scriptures. You can make them say whatever you want. But when you really study them, they say something very different than what they said tonight. I love all people. I don't think we should discriminate against anybody. But I think this ordinance would tend to discriminate, discriminate against people like me who do not agree with the lifestyle of homosexuality or any other type of sexual choice like that other than heterosexual lifestyle. And I would be very concerned, especially with the idea of a commission who can be like a big brother and go carry into my life to find out what I said or what I did and maybe punish me. You guys already have a part-time recycling Nazi. So you know, you're going to bring in some other guy who's going to watch me too. So I would be very concerned about that and I would not be in favor of that. Another thing in the provision which talks about any sexual expression. So that means then if my neighbor wants to marry his horse, that that's going to be okay. Or if somebody else wants to marry an eight-year-old girl, that's going to be okay. I would totally disagree with that. And that's the logical conclusion to this kind of language. So I would oppose that sort of thing. And I would just remind every one of you that I can read your names and I vote. Thanks.
Mr. Joel Pitzer.
Thank you, Freddie, for that. Thank you, city council, for allowing me to speak.
Your name and address.
My name is Joel Pitzer. I'm currently living on campus at Northampton Community College.
Pushed back, pushed back, and again, time is of the essence. Speaking more specifically to the morality question. I read the scriptures and they lead me to certain beliefs. And this bill, if it singles out anybody to give preferential treatment to, the people of religious belief. And it should be that way. It does not prohibit, as I think has been possibly implied, that somehow is preventing people from practicing their religious beliefs. It does not do this. I am still free, if I believe a certain thing about particular lifestyles, to believe that. And to believe that God instructs me not to participate in that lifestyle. But if I own a restaurant, and I ask somebody to leave, yes, that's a moral question. I have acted immorally. I've acted against the God that I claim to be serving in doing that. It was these same scriptures that were twisted in these kinds of ways, not too long ago in this country, to ask, to ask people of color to leave a restaurant or to sit at a different counter. And I often have apologized for the church, that she unfortunately was at the vanguard of those kinds of discriminations. I think we've made great progress in the church. There's a long way to go. And I support what you're doing. As a conservative, and I'll say the word evangelical Christian. And I would urge you to unanimously pass this. Don't wait until you get perfect language to give your vote. Unanimously pass this, to send a loud message to our community that discrimination is not permitted. At our last council, we heard the story of a woman who was talking to her son before she came here. And he said, "Mom, why do we even need this?" The idealism of a young child who can see things that we struggle to see. The unfortunate reality is that is the world we live in. It does go on. In overt and sometimes in covert ways. Will this bill stop discrimination? No. But will it say that we will allow it? Certainly. And hopefully we'll bring redress for those who are discriminated against.
Thank you. Ms. Holland and Lorraine, pass where all the items that you listed are not on the agenda. So that would be under the second courtesy of the floor. So I move to...
Oh, I'm sorry. That was a mistake. I thought you wondered what organization I was representing, but I want to speak on this.
Okay, then. You want to speak?
I am speaking on behalf of the Southside Film Institute, but in support of the ordinance I discussed.
Okay, that's fine.
Good evening. My name is Lorraine Pasquale. I currently reside at 1630 Kenwood Drive in Bethlehem, Pennsylvania. Tonight I'm speaking to you on behalf of the Southside Film Institute. The Southside Film Institute through our annual festival and monthly film club celebrates diversity in all its forms. I am honored that our board of directors voted unanimously to support and not discriminate the ordinance in the city of Bethlehem. We believe that this legislation is long overdue and urge our city council to embrace all members of the Bethlehem community. All of our people, regardless of ethnicity, sexual orientation, religion, cultural background, age, or physical ability, has something to offer and deserve an equal opportunity to participate in our society. We urge you to pass this ordinance and create this human relations commission and do it as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Christopher Kelly.
Thank you. As a guest in your fair city, I am from Virginia. I work for a company in Bethlehem. I have a theory that, and I worked in high-tech technology. And I have a theory that for every human invention, every technology that is invented to solve a problem, creates at least as many new problems as it solves. And this is even more applicable with laws. While it may solve one problem, it creates other problems. And we see it every day with unintended consequences from laws, regulations, benefits, entitlements to one group or one class of society over against others. This very building was built by a company that I believe went out of business. Could not continue its business in Pennsylvania. And I, I as a libertarian, would blame the government for a large proportion of that failure. For not creating an environment where that business could fly, could drive. That said, discrimination is, is an evil thing, but it is also another word for judgment. And when a government claims to itself the sole judgment on any given issue, any kind, any number of unintended consequences befall them. And that, and the first one, of course, is freedom. Now, I am not free to make my own judgment, be it right or wrong, about the issue of whatever special interests are represented in this bill. As an individual, my, my freedom is diminished. I cannot speak freely. I cannot allow, I cannot fire someone from my business or hire someone. I hire person A because I like him better than person B for reasons that might be complained about in this bill by the person B. I lose freedom. You have taken to your government my freedom. And that's an unintended consequence that will hurt the city of Bethlehem and the state of Pennsylvania in the long run. So I applaud you for one, for taking time to consider very carefully the wording of your bill. It is, of course, as you all well know, a very difficult bill to write. It's not, it's not a light matter to say that something that has been considered immoral for thousands of years is now acceptable and moral. That's a difficult place to be in, and I don't envy you. And it's a very difficult job to craft an organization that shall enforce this new morality, as it was described. And will answer any complaint against any person. I think, I think you will find that this is a very, very difficult bill. And that the consequences will be very, very sad in the long term. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hopkins.
My name is Rob Hopkins. I live at 726 West Market Street in the city of Bethlehem. I love Bethlehem. Bethlehem is a place that I'm proud to call home. Today, my city council was supposed to make an important step in the city's future. I certainly hope each of you realize how important this is. More important than any statistics or budget discussion, this legislation to create the Bethlehem Human Relations Commission will have a direct impact, impact on the residents of our city. I applaud each of you for stepping up to support the goal of equal treatment of all people in the city of Bethlehem. But I do ask that you closely examine the details of this legislation to ensure that it truly protects all minorities in the city of Bethlehem from potential discrimination. Specifically, I hope that you fully empower this commission to make, make the broadest impact and address the inequality currently written into the bill's exemptions. Just, just a few words might be changed to enable the Bethlehem Human Relations Commission to help all of the residents of this city. If this commission can ease the burden of just one person facing discrimination, all the debate and deliberation, and even the waiting, will make this well worth it. I had planned to submit for the record a petition, a petition signed by nearly 500 concerned people, urging this council to adopt a strong, fully inclusive, non-discrimination law. Instead, we'll continue to get more signatures. So check your email. Thanks.
Thank you. Ilsa Stoll.
I'm Ilsa Stoll. I live 220 West Langhorne Avenue in Bethlehem. I've lived here for over 40 years and I live here by choice. And I'm very glad that we are finally getting this close to passing a human rights ordinance in Bethlehem, which has been overdue. I would like to support the passage of this law that gives religious organizations an exemption, but does not give any entity associated with a church an exemption. Because that language is too broad and that is not the intent of the law. I also would like to support the expanded protections because I believe that the Human Rights Commission should have the power to enforce a law, especially when it cannot be supported by the state or the federal government. Please consider that as you finalize your draft. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mike O'Hare. I think I got that wrong, but Fourth Avenue. I apologize.
You got it right. Mike O'Hare, 632 Fourth Avenue. I'll be brief. Some of the things that concern me that I've heard tonight. First of all, I'd ask the good reverend to exegete the scriptures instead of i-sageet the scriptures. You can make them say whatever you want. But when you really study them, they say something very different than what they said tonight. I love all people. I don't think we should discriminate against anybody. But I think this ordinance would tend to discriminate, discriminate against people like me who do not agree with the lifestyle of homosexuality or any other type of sexual choice like that other than heterosexual lifestyle. And I would be very concerned, especially with the idea of a commission who can be like a big brother and go carry into my life to find out what I said or what I did and maybe punish me. You guys already have a part-time recycling Nazi. So you know, you're going to bring in some other guy who's going to watch me too. So I would be very concerned about that and I would not be in favor of that. Another thing in the provision which talks about any sexual expression. So that means then if my neighbor wants to marry his horse, that that's going to be okay. Or if somebody else wants to marry an eight-year-old girl, that's going to be okay. I would totally disagree with that. And that's the logical conclusion to this kind of language. So I would oppose that sort of thing. And I would just remind every one of you that I can read your names and I vote. Thanks.
Mr. Joel Pitzer.
Thank you, Freddie, for that. Thank you, city council, for allowing me to speak.
Your name and address.
My name is Joel Pitzer. I'm currently living on campus at Northampton Community College. Like one of the previous speakers, I will also talk about the very real reality I face. Following along the same lines of what's going on here tonight, I will talk about what I didn't choose in my life. I didn't choose to be placed in therapy as a child because my parents and I could not figure out why I was different from other children. I didn't choose to nearly drop out of high school because I was so crippled with anxiety that I could not place. I didn't choose, I didn't choose to wake up every day knowing that I was different, that I was made wrong in my mind. I didn't choose to watch my mother cry when I finally realized what I was and I told her that I was transgender. I didn't choose to have a target painted on my head for who I am. I didn't choose to be abused, well, haven't been abused. I didn't choose to be potentially abused like a woman was in Baltimore, brutally beaten in McDonald's simply for being who she was. I didn't choose to spend every day worrying about the very real possibility that I, a straight A student at Northampton Community College, who is very involved in the community, could one day wake up and find myself jobless and homeless because of somebody acting on a whim. I didn't choose to accept the possibility that I could die tomorrow for being who I am because of intolerance in the world. I could be murdered, and it happens all the time. What I did choose, I chose to use my free time at college to plan a successful transition. I'm starting in September, in the fall semester. I'm going to be living as a woman. It's what I need to do to be able to get by and live and not be crippled with anxiety and crippled with pain. I did choose to spend hundreds of dollars of my own money to seek out a legally acquired therapist to pursue transition. I'm also going to choose to spend even more... I'm also going to choose to spend even more of my own personal money to pay for the surgery, to pay for everything. That's my own money. I did choose to come out here today and fight for the children that are going to grow up a generation from now and go through the same hell I did. So I ask you, city council, please, make sure this bill passes and make sure it passes as quickly as possible, because for every day these laws do not exist, somebody like me is suffering, and they may very well die because of it. Thank you, city council.
Thank you. Mr. Don Snyder?
My name is Donald Snyder. I live at 385 Hartman Road in Bethlehem. My partner, Earl Snyder, and I have a seven-year-old son named Lucas sitting directly behind me. Fortunately, he has gone unnoticed this whole time, which is not usually the case. Earl and I, we, we both work in the community here. We are, we're voters and taxpayers and have been active members in our church. I'm here to strongly encourage you to pass this ordinance tonight and to amend it, to remove the very broad religious exemption that would create a law with such a large loophole that Lucas could have to endure discrimination in his school by any person who declared themselves an entity affiliated with a church. Basically, I am here speaking more so on behalf of the future of my son, whose sexual orientation or gender identity, I have no idea what may or may not be at some given point in the future, but I prepare myself for whatever it may be and hope that the society around us also is prepared for that in the most positive way that it can be. It's essential for Bethlehem that this overly broad exemption be narrowed to exempt religious denominations and religious organizations, but not every entity in Bethlehem. I believe that is the intent of the exemption, and that's how it should be worded. And it is also essential that the Bethlehem Human Relations Commission has the power to fully investigate claims of discrimination and to be able to compel respondents to present information on the, on the complaint, and in rare instances, the commission should have the power to subpoena records, and perhaps if necessary, find those who refuse to stop discriminatory practices. That's what a, a good human relations commission must be able to do. I have, I have lived here for 12 years. My partner has lived here his whole life, and our son, which we have jointly adopted as an infant, has been here all of seven years. I and my family would love for this city to adopt a real and working anti-discrimination policy that would protect our entire family from discrimination. I urge you to pass this ordinance tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Karen Tomlin?
I live at 359 10th Avenue in Bethlehem. Last time, I, when I left the council meeting last time, I went away with lots of questions yet unanswered. And so meanwhile, I did some homework and thought I would bring the information along tonight to help everyone else who might be wondering the same things as I was. One of my concerns was cost, and I saw that Councilwoman Dolan had said something about, well, we would use staff at city council and perhaps use the copy machine once in a while. And here's a quote from the mayor himself from the Morning Call on September 7, 2010, when he announced his Human Relations Commission proposal for it. And surrounded by education and business leaders at a news conference in front of town hall, Callahan said the board would comprise volunteers and the city solicitor's time would be donated. He said the commission would cost nothing. Anything we have? Something else that is a quote, this is the Doylestown Eyes Human Relations Panel. It's from the Intelligencer from July 2010. And in Doylestown, here's a quote from Mr. Glassman. "Doylestown," quote, "will not be overwhelmed with cases, but each case can take many, many hours to investigate," Glassman said, suggesting the council might want to hire someone who helped to help residents file complaints and investigate them. He said council could expect to pay $30,000 for a part-time employee and $60,000 for a full-time employee, plus benefits, mileage, and office supplies. Well, how does that equate, I wonder, year by year? So I kept researching and found out that in York, this is taken from the Intelligencer Journal, October 2010, in York, the City Human Relations Commission asked the mayor for a $315,000 appropriation in 2011, up from its 2010 budget of $258,000, according to the York Dispatch. What about Lancaster? Everybody's talking about Lancaster and how wonderful things were going there. In November, Lancaster County voted to disband their commission effective December 18th. Why? It was costing them $470,000 annually. And one of the unknown consequences, I think, too, that we haven't thought about is, and here is a man who says it better than I could, this is Mayor Hawke from Hackborough. And Hawke says it will cost the borough money to enforce penalties as a result of claims. So we can add that to the annual cost. And here is a quote from Mr. Martin, who was the commissioner to vote against, to vote for disbanding the council in Lancaster. And before they disbanded, he added, "First and foremost, the issue is whether or not there is a duplication of services," Martin said. "Are we being taxed once for a service we're not getting back?" That's Harrisburg. "And then a second time for the convenience of having it here." Well, I, I suggest that the city's broke, because Bethlehem can't borrow fast enough." This is from the Morning Call, January 19th of this year. The 16 billion, I'm sorry, the 16 million, that's bad enough, dollars that Bethlehem will borrow this year to cover unpaid bills and replenish other funds it drained over the years won't come fast enough. So my recommendation is, council, please vote no. And if you don't, you might want to explain to the 50 jobs that were cut already in Bethlehem why you can find the money for this council as opposed to keeping them employed. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Pottinger?
Hi. I'm Phil Pottinger. I actually live in Hellackham, but you know, over the years, I spent my half my life in Lehigh Valley and lived in many addresses in Bethlehem. And in fact, I'm on the board of a not-for-profit that has property in Bethlehem, right up here on 618 Second Avenue, and I'm a small business owner, high-tech business owner in the city of Bethlehem. So as I thought about the history of Bethlehem, this is a really wonderful place. It's got an amazing history. About 250 years ago, we had some people self-sacrifice, some people that came over from a region called Maravian. What was their purpose in coming here? They came because in their hearts, they knew that they held a truth which they needed to share, even at the expense of a one-way trip, never to return to their homeland. In fact, I was pretty impressed. My daughters both went to Maravian School here in Bethlehem. And if you walk just a few minutes up here to the middle school, you'll find the gravestones of Native American Indians that came to faith in Jesus Christ as their Lord and Savior because of the sacrifice of those Maravians that came here to America. So this, this city has a very noble history. It's a beautiful history, and it's one that we should emulate. As I thought about this kind of situation, why do we have this kind of thing? Why are we even here tonight? I'll be very honest with you. It's because people have not understood what true love is. They have not understood what real faith is. Do you know that my sister is an outspoken leader in the homosexual community? I disagree with her completely. Doesn't mean I don't love her. Let me tell you a brief story. I still have three minutes and seven seconds. About 30 years ago, down in Florida, where I went to high school, there was a beautiful bridge built. It's called the Sunshine Skyline. Anybody been down to Florida? You know the Sunshine Skyline? You remember what happened about 30 years ago? A drunken barge captain rammed his barge into the bridge, and the thing collapsed. The center span collapsed. There was a woman at night, driving up, she noticed, she stopped just in time, just in the nick of time, she stopped. She got out of her car, she started flagging people down. Some people stopped. There was one semi-tractor, semi-truck tractor driver, and you know what he did? He laid it on the horn, and he flipped her a bird. Now, how many of you know that lingo? If you're my age, you understand that that needs to make a vulgar sign with your middle finger. Okay? He flipped her a bird, and that man drove that truck to his death. Now, would you say that she was warning him? Was she loving that truck driver by telling him the truth that the bridge was out and he's about to die? How about the eternal truth? The eternal truth that there's a heaven and there's a hell, and we must face a God who has absolute morality. God has defined morality. God is incredibly inclusive. The scriptures say that God is willing that all be saved. But the scriptures also say that many will choose of their own free will from their hatred of God, their unreasoning hatred of God, to reject Him. And the scripture said that they will spend eternity in hell. Eternity, never-ending. People say that God is inclusive. Yes, God is inclusive. He loves all people. He's willing that all will be saved, but not all choose. Not all choose to love God. This kind of ordinance, this kind of ordinance would not exist if people practiced the Christian faith properly. We wouldn't need it. We wouldn't need these kinds of laws. I have a bisexual student at Lehigh University where I am in the ministry. I love him. I meet him regularly. And you know what we do? We talk about real deep meaning of life. This guy is very confused. He's on drugs. He gets drunk all the time. He breaks the law in many ways. I'm glad Joe Kimak didn't join this meeting tonight. Joe's a friend of mine. This guy's very confused. He needs someone to love him and to shepherd him into what's right. So the thought I want to leave is very simple. This kind of law is not necessary if you're truly practicing the Christian faith. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to address city council on the left, left side on this issue? Brett?
Albert, I spoke at 104 Johnson Drive. I didn't particularly mean to be the first one of the folks that didn't write something down, but since you went to the left side, caught me off guard. I spoke before about this, this ordinance, and I still believe it's going to pass 7 to 0 in its final form. But I, I do have a couple of issues, so. And I understand some of the difficulty folks have with discrimination. In my case, it's because I'm old, gray hair, and I say things that council doesn't like. Sometimes they don't like me. And I know that for a fact, except for Mr. Donches, who smiles at anybody. So there's discrimination more than, you know, what's written in here. I circle the word age in here because that's the only one that I think applies to me. And I think Peter Cranfield, it applies to him too, even though he said he doesn't, this service doesn't apply to him. But just to get a little more serious, there, there is an issue that I'm concerned with, and I'll come up here tonight in my mild voice, and I hope you will consider this. I didn't realize Karen Tomlin was going to get up here and talk about money, but basically, I'm going to try to make this positive too, as opposed to my normal personality. The legal fees are going to be handled by the solicitor, all right? Pro bono. I don't believe it's pro bono. He's on, he's on staff, he gets paid, so he's going to handle it, okay? So I think pro bono is a little bit of marketing. I think that's inappropriate terminology.